Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, May 16th, 2022 Select Board Meeting. My name is Rich Mucci. I'm the Chair of the Winchester Select Board, and I'm joined by my colleagues tonight, Mariano Gulaboff, John Fallon, Michael Bettencourt, and we have Anthea Brady on the phone. And with me, next to me, is Acton Town Manager Beth Rudolph. We will begin with the chair report. Well, I don't have a report. Well, we begin with donations.
Reads anything on the teleprompter.
It's been awhile. It's been awhile since we've been in this room and having a meeting, so that's the combos off. Sorry about that. Alright, let's go with some donations. We have some good donations.
I move that we accept a donation of $9,670 for the 2022 Winter Pond Water Treatment, and $2,750 for Winter Pond Water Testing from the Friends of Winter Pond with gratitude.
Second. I guess, do I need to do a roll call vote because Anthea's on the phone?
I think you do.
Yeah, I'll do a roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Anthea?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
I move that we accept donations of $590 to the Council on Aging for appreciation of services provided by the Council on Aging.
Second. Roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Anthea?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Great. And now we'll have Beth's Town Manager Report.
Thank you. So, I'm very happy to report that after a two-year hiatus, the Inca Fair is back.
See it outside.
Setting up, yep. Setting up in the jinx lot across from Town Hall. As we all remember, there are some good and bad things to Inca Fair, the bad being the road closure. So, just to give everybody a heads up, starting on Wednesday, Skilling's Road will close one way from the high school to Washington Street around 6:00 PM. Traffic will be able to travel to the high school on Skilling's Road, but not back towards Town Hall. On Thursday, May 19th, Mount Vernon Street from Converse Place to Washington Street will close both, in both directions at 6:00 PM. And then on Friday, Skilling's Road will close from Washington Street to the high school around 3:30. And then we'll have a couple, great couple days of the fair, and then everything should be back to normal on Sunday. Going down the list, we have several board and committee openings I just wanted to make mention of. The Commissioner of Trust Funds, Senior Citizen Tax Committee, the EFPBC Select Board Representative, and then also the Wildwood Cemetery Advisory Committee. There's open positions, all except appointed by the Select Board, and those positions will be up through the end of this week. And then, just quickly on a couple updates regarding construction projects, the town will be opening bids later this week for improvements at the intersection of Woodside Road and Wildwood Street, and we hope to start construction in late June or early July after school gets out. EverSource Construction is continuing on the 345 KV Project on Cross Street and Washington Street. I also wanted to mention that EverSource is also doing construction on Woburn on Lake Ave, which is headed, heads towards Horn Pond. So, there'll be quite a bit of traffic disruption for folks coming from Pond Street towards Main Street, and also from Main Street towards Pond Street, cutting through that section. And there'll be detours around the section of work where EverSource is working near Horn Pond. The Vintonno and Saferoots School Project is continuing. The contractor is back up there, and they hope to finish work up in July. Work is ongoing at the North Reservoir Dam, and work is also starting at the transfer station renovation project, so folks will start seeing trailers and other equipment being moved into the site over the next couple of weeks. And also, we just, we hope to start construction in the next week or two on the Church Street at Waterfield Road project. And then a couple community events. We have a listening session scheduled for this Thursday via Zoom at 7:00 PM as part of the town's transportation master plan work that we're doing. Invite everybody to join us for that meeting. And for those who are also interested, we have a web tool available where residents can provide feedback about areas where they've, have concerns regarding transportation, pedestrian, bike safety in our town, or would be liking, looking to see improvements. And you can access that by, on the town's website. And then finally, the Mystic River Watershed Association is having a hearing, open house, on May 17th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And that will be held out at the Horn Pond Dam. Thank you.
Any questions for Beth on her report? Thank you, Beth. Beth, just on the EverSource project, I did see, I think, some emails that they were making contact with the Lynch School Community in Morocco, just to notify them about that Lake Ave, although it's not in Winchester. I mean, people.
It's very disruptive.
Yeah, very disruptive to Winchester residents.
Yeah, there was a meeting this afternoon with EverSource and representatives from the school, so maybe should, should be information going out to parents this week.
Great. Alright, moving on. At this point, we've reached the point of our meeting. If anyone's here for public comment, now would be the time to make public comment. Is anyone here? Public comment. Alright, seeing no one, we will continue to move on and go to our business agenda. We have a couple of committee appointments this evening. It looks like for the Affordable Housing Trust Committee, we have three incumbents seeking reappointment. Christopher Galetta, Michael Queenen, and Robin Swan. So, their terms would be to end April 30th, 2025. So, a three-year appointment. Any discussion on that?
I move that we reappoint Christopher Galetta, Michael Queenen, and Robin Swan to the Affordable Housing Trust Committee. Terms to end April 30th, 2025.
Second. Roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Anthea?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you to those three individuals for continuing their service on the Affordable Housing Trust. Next, we have one open position on the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee, also known as T-TAC. We do have one individual, Timothy Matthews, who is here to be interviewed. So, Timothy, if you want to come on up.
How are you? Hi, doing well. How are you?
Good. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
I'll give you some time. We had, we've had your information in the packet today, so thank you for providing that to us, and just give you a minute to talk about yourself and explain why you want to join T-TAC.
Sure. So, my name is Tim Matthews. I live on Kenwin Road, which is probably one of the more well-known cut-throughs in Winchester.
So, you're surprised by the traffic?
Exactly. Well, no. So, we've been there for five years now, almost. So, I'm not surprised by it anymore. But it's definitely an issue that has been near and dear to us since we moved here. I think, living on a cut-through street was not what we necessarily anticipated when we moved here, but it definitely did drive home the point that, you know, over the time we've been here, Winchester is a town that does have quite a bit of cut-through activity. And we, I think, are probably among the streets that get hit by it more than others. And I think, you know, having small kids who play in the yard, obviously, kids in our neighborhood, a lot of them do walk to school. I think the issue of traffic is something that's really important in Winchester right now. And so, I've done a little bit of research on my own to try to look into, I know I've talked to Beth as well about it, but to sort of look into some of the things that are going on in our neighborhood. And so, I thought this would be a nice next step in terms of trying to put some of that knowledge to use as well. So, married, have two kids, five and one, and super excited to have the opportunity to contribute in this way. So, other than that, I mean, by profession, I'm an education psychologist, so I don't actually have direct professional experience, but I do hope that I'm going to be able to contribute something. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Any questions from any members of the board?
Just, you know, thank you for volunteering your time, right? I mean, we have, we get a lot of requests. We get a lot of policy that the T-TAC recommends, right? For, and the recommendations for this board to adopt. So, we really appreciate everybody who chooses to serve their time there. And I mean, serve your time.
Exactly.
Like, you have one more chance to leave before.
But, you know, you obviously brought up the EverSource project, which I know in our neighborhood at least has been a pretty big point of discussion right now. So, I think that's another great example of the issues that we're facing.
Anyone else? Alright, hearing no other discussion or questions if somebody wants to make a motion.
I move that we appoint Timothy Matthews to the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee. Term to expire, March 31st, 2025.
Second. Roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Anthea?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you, Tim, for serving.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Feel better, Anthea.
I think they were meeting at 7:00 o'clock tonight.
Yeah, I know. I, I said unfortunately, I have a.
Reschedule to next week, so you.
Okay, good. Well, no, they actually asked me if I come. I said, I actually unfortunately have a prior commitment. Thank you all so much. Have a good night.
You too, thanks.
Okay, moving on to our business agenda. Next up is the Washington Swanton RFP. You know, this is an RFP that we've been working on. We had a hearing a couple of months ago at this point.
I think it was in January.
Yeah, where we got some valuable feedback from some of our, from the public and some of our other town committees. We've incorporated, you know, that feedback into the RFP. And we're at a point, at this point, where we, I think, feel comfortable with its current draft. And, you know, certainly, we'll be looking to move this process forward. So, Beth, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, or?
Yeah, so, as Rich said, this has been going on for quite a while. There was actually a working group established with the neighbors, I guess, maybe a year and a half ago, two years ago at this point. So, there's been a lot of work over the years. The town did take the property last December, and so this is the next kind of logical step is to put the RFP out there for redevelopment of the site and see what come back, comes back to us in terms of proposals.
Any discussion about this RFP?
Just only to say that our, you know, objective is to issue the RFP, have responses by mid-August, and then come back to fall town meeting for approval. So, this, this will go back to town meeting.
Great. Yeah, it's, you know, it's a process, obviously, and this is, you know, the next step. And, you know, look forward to seeing what people respond, and hopefully, we get some robust responses and have some choices, and, you know, then take it to town meeting and let the public decide, so.
When's our, do we have to make a band payment, July 1st? Is that on the purchase price?
No, we did the borrowing in February, I want to say. So, we don't, yeah.
We don't have a band payment until June 30th of next year?
Next year.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good. We're good for now, so. So, this timeline works nicely with, with that process. So, I think everyone saw the current draft, had that available. I think there were some tweaks to that current draft that we need to make, based on some feedback that we received, agreeing on change and clear up criteria number two. And Beth, you have some sample language there?
Sure. Do you want me to read it?
Sure.
So, based on the feedback we received, some good feedback we received from the Planning Board and the Housing Partnership Board, we did a little bit of, as Rich said, tweaking to criteria number two, which is with respect to the affordable housing criteria. So, under the not advantageous criteria, we still have a not applicable. Under the advantageous criteria, we have revised language that says, for rental projects, more than 25% of all units are restricted to be affordable at or below 80% AMI, or more than 20% of units are restricted to be affordable at or below 50% AMI. So, the minimum criteria for this is basically that all, in accordance with the vote of the town meeting, all the units have to be counted on the town's subsidized housing inventory. In order to make that, to meet that requirement, there's two ways to do it. One is for, with ownership units, for all units to be restricted to be affordable at or below 80% AMI. And then for rental, there's two options. 25% of the units are restricted to be affordable at or below 80% AMI, or 20% of the units are restricted to be affordable at or below 50% AMI. So, basically, with the, with the advantageous criteria, we've tried to incentivize for the rental development having more units beyond the 25 or 20% actually affordable. And then for the highly advantageous criteria, we set out some new language. The first being, for rental projects, more than 25% of the units are restricted to be affordable at or below 80% AMI, with an emphasis on the number of units at or below 60% AMI, or more than 20% of the units are restricted to be affordable at or below 50% AMI, with an emphasis on the number of units at or below 30% AMI. And then for ownership projects, all units are restricted to be affordable at or below 80% AMI, with an emphasis on the number of units at or below 60% AMI. So, basically, under the highly advantageous criteria, we've tried to say you get more, you get credit, not just for providing more affordable units, but also for providing more deeply affordable units, so really trying to target those lower income brackets.
That makes sense to me. I don't know if anyone has any comments on any of that? Improvement? So, I think, like I said, we have a couple of tweaks to make to the RFP. So, I think, you know, we'd be looking for a motion and vote tonight to authorize the town manager to make, you know, the necessary changes, and then get this RFP out. So, I don't know.
So moved.
Disagrees with that? Any other comments? Okay. If we can make someone make a motion?
Yeah, let me just make this one here. I move that we issue the RFP for Washington Swanton Street parcel as presented, including the proposed evaluation criteria redraft at table, and subject to review and changes elected by the town manager and management.
Second. Roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Anthea?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Great. Next on the agenda, sticking with the affordable housing theme, is the Waterfield Lot. So, we have a special town meeting coming up, June 6th. So, we're about three weeks away from that. And we've been spending a significant amount of time negotiating with Civico, and I'm happy to report that we have reached a point where I think we have a LDA and lease substantially completed, and that we can move forward tonight to approve that, subject to some last-minute changes that we're just waiting for on some of, some minor information that Civico needs to add into it. We're supposed to have those changes, I think, mid-week. And then what we would do is, you know, roll this lease out, LDA out to the public, along with, you know, town meeting documents so that people have significant amount of time in order to review that. We'll, we're going to have a public hearing next week. I think we're targeting Tuesday night for that. We're just trying to clear some conflicts. But, you know, certainly, as we're three weeks out, by mid-week, you should, the public should start, you know, receiving a lot of information on this and have several opportunities to, you know, certainly ask questions and get those answers leading up to the town meeting on June 6th. So, I think we're at a good point. I want to thank the staff, our legal counsel, for diligently working on this in a compressed time, timeline these last several weeks to get, you know, not just an LDA done, but a lease substantially completed. So, with that, you know, I don't know, Beth, do you have anything else to add, or?
No, no. I think we've done a lot of good work over the past few weeks. I'm excited to see where we're headed with this. So, happy to be going into special town meeting. It's been a long time coming.
As am I. I don't know if there's any discussion, or any board members have any comments they wish to make?
Many lawyers looked at this at all.
Just a couple.
Just a couple, yeah.
Right. Hearing no other comments. Like I said, we're just beginning the process, the public process at this point. So, you know, look to have that out by mid-week and make it, you know, available to everyone. So, what's that? We're just waiting for those changes.
You want a motion?
I would like a motion.
Okay. I move that we authorize town manager and chair to finalize the negotiations on the ground lease and LDA with Civico for the proposed disposition of the Waterfield Lot and provide notice to town meeting residents.
Second. Roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Anthea?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Great. Okay. So, we kind of reached the point in the meeting where we're going to talk about some goals and work plan and some committee assignments. I think what I'll do first, why don't we do committee assignments first, and then we'll go back and look at goals and work plans? That's okay with everybody? So, I think there was a list in your packet of just the committees that we have at this point, and some suggested committees that we may want to form based on what we have going on and the state of the town. So, I think this list, you know, we have Mike, my name, and Mariano's name in here just since, you know, we were the holdovers from the, from the old board. But certainly, you know, we could certainly make changes as we go down this list. And then Patty, I think you'll, you'll give us a nice typed-up assignment list once we finalize it, hopefully, tonight. Any general questions before we begin? Okay. So, just the Affordable Housing Trust. Mike, you've been on that committee, the Select Board Liaison for that committee.
Yep, sounds good to me.
Do you wish to do that?
Please.
Okay. The Audit Advisory Committee, they actually had a meeting last week, and their next meeting's in December, I believe.
So, it's a good time to get on.
Yeah. Mariano, we had you listed as a backup. I don't know if there's somebody who wants to do Audit Advisory Committee primary person?
That seems more. No, Anthea's not here. She's going to do it.
Anyone?
What's it consist of?
You don't have to meet till December. That's your next meeting. But I basically, every, is it every year or every other year?
I've only been to one meeting myself, so I'm probably not the best.
I think it's every other year we get on here, right? Isn't that? And it's.
I'm not sure how often it is, but I mean, it's, you know, it's one or two meetings a year with our, with the auditors about.
That's fine.
It's. It's not bad at all.
Stacy is the point person, so she'll fill you in.
Alright, John? Committee on Names. They don't meet very regularly, but we typically have a liaison to that committee. Anybody interested in that?
I'm happy to be added there. My honor, here.
Thank you, Anthea. Fields Management Committee. Obviously, an active committee in town. I didn't know if anyone had interest being on that committee.
I will unless someone else wants it.
Sorry.
I would be interested, maybe more so in the Field Master Plan, which is related, but down the list.
Okay.
I think you can put both of them and take me out on that one.
So.
Putting Anthea on both. Right?
Yeah. So, Anthea, you want to be the primary for the Fields Management Committee?
Sure.
And then John be the backup as well?
Yeah.
Housing Partnership Board. Mike, do you want to continue with that?
Yeah, I'll stick with that one.
I'm the backup. I mean, I guess, I'm happy to continue to be the backup. Cable Advisory Committee. I've attended two Cable Advisory Committee meetings. I'm happy to stay on with that. It's a good group.
Well, I don't think we have another meeting for five years, right? Aren't both done? Both contracts done?
Not supposed to reveal these secrets. You want it?
I think it's better to have a lawyer on that one.
Yeah. Capital Planning Committee. Mike, you've done this for a number of years. Are you looking to continue on with that?
Yeah, I'd, I guess, give it up if there was somebody that was interested.
I'm interested.
You have an interest in it, John? Anyone else? No? Alright, John. I think, you know, it's a good fit, given your conversations we had in your background and what you do for work, so. Should we have a backup for that? I'll back you up, John, in case you're. I've been the Chamber of Commerce liaison. I'd like to continue in that role unless somebody else really wants it.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Conservation Commission?
I'd like to be the primary.
Okay. Anybody want to be the backup? Anybody wanna be the backup?
I can back up if you need someone.
Mike? Accounts on Aging, Mike, you've been.
Yeah, I'll stick with that.
Anybody wanna be a backup? All right.
Sure.
John? Disability Access Commission, I attended a meeting the other day, I'm happy to, to do that unless somebody else wants it.
I'm happy to get back with them.
Thanks, Anthea. Energy Management Committee, Mariano, you've been doing that, do you wanna stick with that?
Yep.
Anyone wanna be a backup on that?
Sure, I'll back up.
The Permanent Street Tree Committee, I guess I've been on that, I don't think. Somebody else?
Let's leave that open because I, I might listen to the other one, my usual career with me, to see if that's still in existence.
Pick the committees with five-year meetings. That aren't existent, huh? Okay, we'll, we'll have a question mark on that one. Planning Board, I've been liaison for the Planning Board, I'm happy to continue that unless somebody else wants it.
I think it makes sense for the chair to be liaison to the Planning Board in general.
Somebody wanna be a backup?
Sure. Well.
You're gonna just assert everything?
No, I, I mean, the backups aren't, I mean, you're not really doing much backup, right? It almost never happens, but if, if somebody else wants to, Anthea, or somebody, just.
Anthea, can I put you as backup for the Planning Board?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Great. T-Tac, Mariano, been the primary, do you still wanna do that?
Yeah, I'd like to keep T-Tac, yeah.
Great. I'll be your backup. Since I gotta put my name somewhere here. Wildwood Cemetery, we, Mike was the backup, but I don't know if anybody's interested in doing that as a primary. Mike, you can slide into that one.
I'll do it.
You?
Sure.
Thanks, John. Winchester Hospital Leahy Pilot, that was me. I'll continue with that unless somebody else wants it. Fields Master Plan.
Just before we jump down the list.
Did I miss something?
The, no, it's not on here, the Cultural District had asked to have a Select Board Liaison.
It's down at the bottom.
Oh, is it? Okay. Oh, yeah, sorry. Thanks, Patty.
Thank you. Okay, so, those are all the committees, did I miss any, Patty, on that?
No, those are eight though.
Okay, so the next group is, is working groups, and Beth, I see some, these are new suggestions on here, are these committees that we're thinking about forming, or?
I think some of these, Patty, you might have put on here, right?
Right, the, um, the State of the Town Committee, Mariano, have you gone to?
I, I am the State of the Town Committee.
Put you on your shoulders.
We've, we've had, I mean, I think we had one meeting after the override, and then we, we didn't have any more, so.
So is this something that would be just pulled together after another override?
It's essentially, well, it's before the override, so this was the committee that met prior to the override, and we pulled together FinCom and schools and, and Lance was in it as well back then, and, you know, put the fifty versions of the spreadsheets for the override, so that's the.
Oh, that's right, that was when I started.
And then we had one after the override to plan for the future, and we decided, well, we have too many years to know what's gonna happen, so.
So I think I'm gonna reserve on some of these because we haven't formed some of them yet, but some of them like that do exist, so let's, let's start with the Fields Master Plan. I think. Anthea?
Yes, I'd be interested in that.
Great.
So the other one that exists is the Transfer Station Working Group, I was appointed to that one?
Yep. Do we have that on here? Oh, that's down there, yep. So Mariano's on that, and I understand, do we need one more appointment on there?
Well, when we originally set it up, we had, you know, we have two members from FinCom, three kind of at-large town meeting members, staff, and then we had originally said two members from the Select Board. At the time, there was only one member appointed, so it's up to you guys if you wanna have a second member, or you wanna have Mariano continue on.
I don't, I don't think that we necessarily need a second member, but, you know, I know that resident Quinn Simpson had been asking like every day since the town meeting in the fall to be on it, and been sending emails and everything, and so if we're having one less Select Board member, unless somebody wants to jump in, I think adding another resident from that area would make sense. I mean, it's not, I don't think the working group is, you know, outlined by the charter, I think we can change it by, you know, who we wanna listen to, I don't know if anybody else is.
Yeah, I think it's two appointments from the Select Board, it's not necessarily two Select Board members, so, and in the end, they are recommendations to the Select Board, and we'll vote on it, so it's not like the working group will make any binding votes.
So less of us is better than more of us, and that can, yeah.
In general, yeah.
Do you know if he wants to do it?
Yeah, I, I, I think he does wanna do it.
I'm gonna volunteer somebody. That he doesn't wanna do.
Yeah.
Well, let's check with them if, I mean, if everyone's fine with that, that's fine with me. Sorry, what's, Quinn?
Quinn Simpson, yeah. And we'll start meeting right after special town meeting, so, for anybody who's.
And the transportation logic is getting underway too, right?
Right, yep, yep.
Just going back up, Flood Drainage Stormwater Management Group, do we, does that, that still exists?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure how this, how, it's not like a, I've never, I mean, it's probably the Select Board Liaison.
It's just a liaison to meet with Matt Abrams and, you know, that's, so that's, I've been doing that.
Water sewer re.
Yeah, water sewer rates and stuff like that.
Can we continue with that? The MBTA Train Station, do you mind if I steal that from you, or are you?
That's fine, I, I was gonna say, I don't know that we need that anymore now that it's signed, but.
Probably more dealing with complaints at this point.
Yeah, so, yeah, you can.
It's my wheelhouse these days. State of the Town, so do we, so I would imagine this, this group will be active this year, given, you know, the potential override for the schools.
Probably not, so we, in general, we haven't met for dead exclusions, it was only for the operating override.
I see.
That was the.
Oh, it might be active anyways, depending on how things go, so.
I think the, the Town Center Initiative Steering Committees and the Town Center Parking Committee are probably more related to the state that we just kind of finished up with Tool that, that you and Mike were kind of involved in.
Yeah, I'd be happy to stay involved in those.
Yep.
Whatever.
Yeah, that's, that's what I.
If you take primary, I'll take backup.
So with those, are those gonna be merged into two, back into one?
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was always kind of one, one thing, yeah.
I, some, this list was done before me, so some of the items except for like the last, last four, which is what was suggested to put on, and then I cleaned out a couple non-existent ones.
So new ramps downtown, speed ramps, huh?
Yeah.
Center of town, was that in the drawing board for a while, or is this, is it a test?
So we actually got grant money last year, and we purchased them, and they were out in the fall for a little bit, and then we took them up for the winter, and they're back in, back in for the spring and summer, yeah.
So, just sorry, going back to State of the Town, so Mariano, you're gonna stay on that just in case there's a.
Yeah, I'd like to stay on it.
Someone might be a backup?
Sure.
Okay, Master Plan Implementation Committee, so I did receive a letter from the Planning Board in the middle of town meeting about picking Select Board members to serve on a selection committee for the Steering Committee, and they had four different committees. I'm just gonna try to pull it up. Do we need actual people on the Steering Committee? So, here are the committees. Balancing Development with Preservation, Connecting People to Places, and Youth Representatives.
They're looking for a Select Board member, or for the Select Board to appoint somebody to?
No, they're looking for a representative from the Select Board to serve on those three committees.
What are the committees?
Balancing Development with Preservation, so the five members from the Historical Commission, Housing Partnership Board, Planning Board, Designer Review Committee, Select Board will then select candidates to serve on that, on the master, be the representatives for that body on the Master Plan.
So, okay, so we need a member to elect other people to be on this committee?
That's what I'm getting at, just at this, I mean, I haven't heard anything else since this. I'll just move forward, I can check with Diab and see, and we can discuss it at our next meeting, but, um, yeah, it's, it's basically members to appoint people to serve.
I'm happy to serve on one of them. One of those three, or all three if nobody wants to.
But I don't. I'll table the Master Plan Implementation Committee, I don't know if we, if we have an appointment to that, I don't know what the story is with that, so. So do you wanna, um, do you wanna point someone for Balancing Development with Preservation? Connecting People to Places for Youth Representative, I'll take Connecting People to Places. Does someone wanna do the Youth Representative? Basically picking, help selecting the Youth Representative for the Master Plan Steering Committee?
I can take that one.
Thanks, Anthea. And do you wanna take Balancing Development with Preservation?
Sure.
Great. All right. Did you get that, Patty?
No. So what you can do is just forward that.
Yeah, I'll forward that too.
I had, Sally Dale had sent me some stuff, and I thought I could find it quickly and then come up. An explanation of what the committee is about.
Yeah, this just came in the middle of town meeting, so it's just been busy times, we just haven't had a chance, and we haven't been meeting, you know, outside of the, the meetings before town meetings, so. Okay, ARPA, I don't think we have a, a committee necessarily for that, right?
At this point, I don't think so, no.
So it's all us.
Yeah.
It's all us. And then Winchester Cultural District, I think, are they looking, they're looking for a liaison?
Yeah.
Is anyone interested in that? I'll do it. Okay, so, I, um, the only other thing that I have listed here that we have, I mean, theoretically, we're supposed to have a Select Board Member or Appointment to the EFPBC, is that?
Yeah.
Am I right about that? So I don't know if anybody wanted to join that, be our representative for that?
Sure.
I think it's a Select Board, that, that position's currently advertised, right, that's one of the positions we have up on the website.
Right, but don't we appoint a Select Board Member to the committee too?
I think it's a Select Board Appointment to the EFPBC, and it could be one of you, I suppose.
Oh. Okay.
I don't know if it ever has been.
I, we haven't in my.
I thought there were three openings.
There hasn't been, but I know that.
I think there's one.
The superintendent is on it, so there should be a board member on it too, and you want attending it, or?
I don't think we've ever had a board member.
It's, it's the Select Board appointee to the EFPBC, I don't know that there's anything that would prohibit a Select Board Member from being an appointee, but we do have it currently advertised on the website.
All right, well, if it doesn't, if we don't get anybody in the advertisement, then maybe we'll appoint a member to be on the committee, and John, if you're.
Yeah.
You raised your hand.
Shake it up, come on, just 'cause it hasn't been that way.
You can serve if we don't get anybody, does that make sense to people?
Yeah, makes sense to me.
Okay, so I think we'll stop there, I mean, unless I'm missing any committees or anything at this point, we'll stop there and kind of go through our work plan and maybe in our goals, and maybe as we go through there, we might, you know, need, feel need for an additional committee or something, does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah, I, I think I mentioned you, Rich, I think it makes sense for us to maybe establish a CPA working group or committee, just to kind of evaluate our options. Something that was a priority in the Housing Reduction Plan, and now that we're getting, moving forward with a lot of these projects for affordable housing, and we see fields are in demand, and also, you know, preservation, you know, those are the, the kind of biggies that the Community Preservation Act hits, and I know that it had failed a bunch of years ago here, but I think it is really necessary for us to continue our objectives, but I, I know that it's a pretty specific process that we have to go through, so. That would be the only thing I'm happy to help out if.
So that working group would explore presenting this again?
Yeah.
To town meeting, okay. Anyone have thoughts on that?
And the voters. And the voters.
And the voters, yeah, yeah, right.
I mean.
That's the first step.
So, I mean, I think for the CPA, that would be like all of us, right, because we would all have to agree, and we would all have to communicate with all the different, with the residents, right? Why it's necessary and what the money would be spent on, and I think we learned from the override that residents are willing to pay for, if we tell them what, it will pay for, right? I mean, we, so we had, within a few years, we had an override, an operating override that was much smaller that didn't pass, and then we had a very large override that passed, and I think the difference in the messaging was, you know, exactly what this is gonna pay for, so I think that's, you know, I think that's something that we will all have to.
And, and so I don't disagree with anything you're saying, I just, I think, and when we go through the work plan, we might see this, but I think we need to, you know, maybe have a member, or, or members, take the lead on certain items, just to, to get it.
That's fine.
And, so I don't know, is that what you meant by work?
Yeah, 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 to, yeah, I mean, I, I'm happy to take a lead on it, I think that we need to just kind of move forward and kind of start, start talking about a, a strategy, because it, it's a little bit of a campaign that's involved, and it's a little bit, it's probably like the State of the Town Committee in preparation for a recommendation, and, and part of it is, we've gotta see when we can fit a vote for something like that in, right? Because we've got Lynch Override coming and Operating Override, so, and I, we, I think we keep talking about it in the way that we're waiting for this perfect time, when we're not gonna have an override on the ballot, and it just doesn't look like that's gonna happen, and we end up spending a lot of resources on, on, on other things, you know, the Carriage House in particular, right? I mean, we could have used Community Preservation Act, you know, money to fund that instead of looking for alternative options, so, and we get State Match, right? So it's certainly less now than it was at a certain point, but it's still a good revenue source for these, these policy priorities that we have, so.
Okay. I mean, anyone have an issue with, you know, essentially having Mike, you know, begin researching that process?
I don't have an issue, I just wanted to make sure that we know that we all have to be on board with it.
Oh, yeah, right, I mean, if there's any, you know.
Does anyone wanna help him, or?
Or is there any issues, you know, with that, you know, policy-wise, I mean, I guess we, you know, have to move that policy forward.
Yeah, I mean, so, so tonight's kind of like hitting the reset button, right? Like, what are you passionate about? What do you wanna get done this year? I mean, what, you know, what, you know, what do you wanna work on, and, you know, what can we work on as a group? What are our goals? And kind of, you know, this work plan, I mean, some of us were involved, I think in December, I think that's when you rolled this out, Beth, is, you know, looking at this, this work plan, and we, we commented on it, but that's kind of, you know, we have two new members, obviously, and so it's, you know, if there's, you know, I think it would make sense, you know, to have this guide us over the next several months on how we, you know, and, and look, we're not gonna accomplish everything on here, I mean, that's impossible, but if there's three or four or five things, you know, maybe a few more, that we can get, you know, accomplished, and maybe divide and conquer a little bit, and have, you know, different members kind of run point on those, I think that would, you know, be the way to do it, but I'm open to suggestions, and just trying to, you know, kind of rather than be reactive, kind of be proactive, and, you know, and, and have us kind of, you know, guide the process. What, what people think of that?
I like it.
Yeah, and it makes sense, and, and we go through our work plan, I mean, we see a lot of stuff that's completed, or that we have new priorities, or, you know, so it's helpful to kind of hit that, that reset button.
So Beth put this together, and I think you've updated it since, yeah, April fourth, just based on what's been happening since you created this, and I, I, when I first saw this, I thought it was a great, you know, document, just to kind of capture the issues that are before us, and that we're trying to deal with, so. You know, I'm certainly open to any suggestions to anyone about, you know, what goes on here, or what gets taken off, but, you know, I think I'd love to have a central document that we can point to, you know, maybe once a month, or, you know, you know, every so many meetings, you know, to, to see the progress and have people report back to us, you'll see, it's not on the agenda, but we'll, we'll add it back now that we have committee assignments, is, you know, a chance for members to just kind of, at the beginning, just report back to the, to the group on what they've, you know, heard at committees, or what's coming down the pipe, so, so we're not taken by surprise, and, you know, and, and maybe give some input, you know, into those issues as well. So it's a more collaborative effort, I don't know how people feel about that. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, so I'm just gonna keep going, you guys just.
Tell them we disagree.
Tell me when, yeah, tell me when I'm, when you disagree or I'm out of line, so, uh, so I think Beth, what is, so these are all capital school building projects.
Yeah, so the first part are capital and school building projects that are funded, so these are things that we have, like, happening right now in terms of either in design or construction.
Okay, and you're gonna see on here as we run through this, that you'll see Mark and Beth's name, you know, appears, I think, on almost every, every one of these, so.
And Meg.
And Meg. So I think from a.
That was the problem when we started putting this together, it's just like, well, we just made a list of all you guys and the things that you have to do, so.
It's all good, all good things.
Yeah.
So, I guess on here, Beth, if we're looking at one through ten, is there any, you know, action that we need to take, I mean, some of these projects I see, like Cross Street Bridge, for example. I'm thinking Swan Street Bridge, sorry, but is there anything you, you would want us to be working on? You know, maybe the townwide traffic study, Town Center Action Plan, we talked about those.
Yeah, I think the, you know, I mentioned earlier this evening, we have the listening session on Thursday night for the townwide kind of traffic, transportation master plan, I think that is a big effort for us to kind of wrap up over the next, you know, six months, so that we can get a better idea long-term, how we wanna plan out the projects that we have and the priorities that we see across town in terms of vehicular, pedestrian, and bike safety, so to me, that's a, that's kind of a key one in the next, you know, six months or so.
So would you be looking for a member to kind of run point with you on that, or?
Sure, yeah.
Is there anybody that was interested in that?
Yeah, I'm interested in that.
So Mariano and Beth, since you guys are the, our transportation experts, drive through Ryanair Hampshire, I think the speed limit in town is twenty-five miles an hour, and it's strictly enforced, it's, it's really nice. So, so there are some state roads in town that we can't control the speed limit on, but all the other ones we can, we can't, what's the?
We, we, the town did pass a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit requirement, so basically, it took anywhere was a de facto thirty mile per hour speed limit, and dropped it down to twenty-five mile per hour. So it's, the issue is, there are state roads, right, there are some state roads, the other issue is that there are places where we have what's called a regulatory speed limit, where the mass DOT has actually approved the speed limit for that road, some cases in the forties, some cases in the seventies, like Highland Ave, for example, is a regulatory speed limit area where, in some areas, it's thirty miles an hour in one direction, thirty-five miles an hour in the other direction. So we can't buy the adoption of that twenty-five mile per hour townwide, we can't change those, that would require us to go to the state to petition, and we have to do a speed, it's like you pull the string and you just keep going, we have to do a speed, speed study, and that's kind of partly what, we talked about a couple weeks ago, about the Safety Zone Speed Limit.
Yes.
Areas, so we did approve the townwide twenty-five mile per hour, and that's, you know, the signs are kind of at the borders of the town, and that's enforced throughout. Areas. Um, so we did approve the townwide 25 mile per hour, and that's, you know, the signs are kind of at the borders of the town, um, and that's enforced throughout town. And those kind of densely, thickly settled neighborhoods is the.
I had no idea.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the issue is that, you know, it doesn't, it's not followed, right? And, um, I mean, enforcement can only go so far, you know, the reality is.
Awareness too, I mean.
We have.
It's definitely awareness.
Yeah, we have very few, you know, officers on duty at, at any time, right? I mean, we don't have, uh, a large police force to do enforcement, but it's, it's road design, right? It's, and that's what show, like, people slow down when the road is narrow, when there's cars parked, right? I mean, you can see it on, um, uh, is it Pond, right? Lake, the one in front of the tennis courts. I always forget if it's Pond or Lake, what the name of.
Oh, Palmer, Palmer, yeah, yeah.
You can see it, you know, when there's no tennis, people are going 40, 50 miles an hour, and when there's tennis and there's people parked on both sides, everybody's going 25 miles an hour, right? Just because it's so much narrower and it's, you know, it feels more dangerous, but it's actually safer, right? And, um, yeah, it's just, it's road design and, um, yeah, speed tables.
Tables, race crosswalks.
Yeah, race crosswalks.
So you asked a little question. Do you know that, right?
Yeah, no, I'm just keeping, really more curious. It's just such a much more pleasant.
So Mario is, Mario is going to run point on that with Beth from this, this study. Um, the Town Center Action Plan, um, I've been working on that, and Mike, you've been involved in that too.
Yeah.
I think we can continue on that. Downtown Action Plan, we announced that, um, town meeting. I mean, I'd love to see that, you know, come to some type of fruition, um, you know, this year, uh, some, some variety of it, um, so. See if we can do that. Um, next page, Wild Winter Section, um, we're good with that. North Reservoir Dam, um, is going on right now.
Yep.
It's pretty impressive if you've gone up there. I mean, it's quite an operation.
Yeah.
To look at, so, um, I recommend people, you know, don't get too close.
From a distance.
From a distance, but it's, it's quite an operation. Um, the Sals Reservoir Dam, we're looking for design funding. The only thing I would say about this um, is, and we talked about this, is getting, maybe getting federal funding or getting, you know, on Catherine Clark's radar, uh, for that project. So I don't know, John, you mentioned.
I said, but then I asked Jay about it, and he said, well, we just, we don't know what it's going to cost yet, so then I'm like, we're going to Catherine Clark and say, well, I'm not really sure what I'm asking for, but I'm going to ask for it. So I'm like, well, let's get a little more, a few parameters around it.
Yeah, but eventually we're going to know what it's going to cost, right?
Yeah, after this, we just got the engineering funded and we'll have a better idea.
No, I get that.
So can I put you on here as?
No, 100%, I'd love to.
I already wrote it down, actually.
You did, right?
By the end of the year.
Thanks, John. We don't need to do anything for Morocco Culvert, uh, School Culvert. Um, the Sports Court, um, I've been working on, so I'll, I'll continue with that. We actually have another meeting with the neighbors Wednesday night. Town building risk assessment. This is, um, is this something from the police department?
Yeah, so there was, um, there was kind of an initial study done a couple of years ago, um, and now we have to kind of go into part two of that analysis, which is more of a.
It's like an active shooter kind of thing?
Um, I think it's more, it's that, but it, but it's more of like, how can we maintain, like, a town hall, secure building, what are the things that we can do to make it more secure? You know, for the employees and for the public, um.
It's policy and infrastructure, like, it's not, you know, um, maybe some cameras, maybe some, you know, um, ID swiping cards, but also like, you know, how we, you know, doors closing at certain times and things like that. So I, I'm happy to help out to the degree that it's.
Do we need someone, do you think?
You know.
This point?
Um.
Or no?
I, I mean, uh, we can, we can definitely, um, we're kind of ramping up the next phase of that, so, you know, we're not ready right now, but in the next few months, I think we'll, we will be.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, Davidson Park feasibility study. I know there's a lot going on, uh, there, um.
Yeah, so they'll, they'll be back. Um, so we got, we have money. We got the $200,000 from this Natural Resources Defense Grant to do kind of the initial feasibility, uh, work that's ongoing right now. We actually had a very successful kind of open house last, not last week, the week before, uh, at Davidson Park, got a lot, gotten a lot of good feedback from, um.
Would you like someone on that?
Well, as I was going to say, we're going to bring it back to the whole board at the end of June, so we probably don't need anybody between.
All right, great.
So Beth, this is the, the park across from the soccer facility?
It is, yeah.
Now Drew, for a million years, I think, I can't remember if he was on the Conservation Commission, whatever, he wanted the average owner to be dredged up there.
So that's, that's this, this is the continuation of the, the effort that Drew started, um, and got funding for many years ago now at town meeting. Um, th- this is the next kind of step of that. Uh, there was an initial feasibility study done, and now we're moving forward, kind of reevaluating it, um, and hopefully we'll get funding to go into, to design through this NRD program.
So, do you think we'll ever get any money to dredge the Mill Pond where all the sediment ended up?
Just like my pet thing. I may run for select board until that happens.
Yeah, put it on the capital list.
You got it.
It's on tape too, you know. Uh, okay, so we won't do anything with that. Ever Source, the 345, you know, construction, I know this is like an ongoing issue. I, I did see actually an email from Anthea, um, right before we came out here. So I don't, I mean, I do feel like it would be important to have somebody just, you know, stay on this a little bit, um, outside of the, the, the whole board, so I don't.
Sure.
Thea, I don't know if you're interested in, since you're right, right, right in the heart of it.
I am right in the middle of it.
Yeah.
And we did have some, some issues over the past week, so I'm happy to take that one.
Great. And, and, and don't move too many signs out there, Anthea, yourself.
We were suggested to do it ourselves, which was a little, uh.
Yeah.
It's cause we haven't had, we haven't been able to through, uh, on Thursday.
Okay. Um, all right, just moving on, uh, just some of these, uh, the Manchester Field turf replacement, you know, in, in talking to people, I understand that this is kind of a, at a critical point, um, with that turf. There's some concerns about its actual, uh, ability to be used, um, going forward in, in the near term, so, um, I mean, I'm happy to try to problem solve that, unless somebody else wants to.
I think that goes with the field's master plan kind of thing, right? Because, I don't know, it's up to you. I don't know if Anthea wants to, since she's on there.
Anthea, do you want that? Or we can work on it together?
Yeah, why, why aren't we going to tell it? Cause it sounds like you have some nor, knowledge of what's been happening with it previously.
Yeah.
I just want to second that that, I think that is a very critical need that we're going to be facing in the very near future.
Is that like six months in the future or under a year?
I don't have a timeline, but it's, it's, it's a, it's a shorter duration than you would hope it would be.
Yeah. One of the things that we had talked about was, um, you reaching out to the local business community to see if they would sponsor, um, you know, signage and things like that for certain fields, Manchester Field especially, and, um, to see if we can generate some revenue. So the, the idea really was that when we did the turf, uh, over at Skilling's, that the additional revenue that, that we got from, um, renting that, um, field would then go fund, you know, the replacement of the turf there, and then kind of vice versa. They would kind of just, um, serve each other. But with the pandemic, um, you know, and the, the sports being reduced significantly, I don't think we've been able to generate the revenue, um, from the fields and, um, and on the commercial side either. I think that's how a lot of communities fund these replacements, those two things.
Yeah, I don't disagree. Um, I just, we've reached our shelf life with it, so.
I mean, there, yeah, I mean, the West Side Fields has a lot of different businesses that have signs on the, I think yours, your law firm.
Right field.
Pay for that, though. He just hung it himself.
So, so my son reminds, when he's out in right field playing, three times a week, he can, uh, be reminded.
So, yeah, I mean, if we could do something similar, right, that would be.
Okay. Yeah, all right, so Anthea and I will, will run point on that. The Town Hall HVAC, I don't think we need anybody for that at this point. And then looking at the financials, the one through five at least listed here, I mean, that's something that we would do as a board together. I don't know if you, I mean, we've been, Mario, on the transfer station working group. I don't know if we need anybody on any of these other things, or you tell me.
No, I think it's, I agree, it's all, all policy. Um, thanks for the board as a whole.
Go on to page three. Um, we talked about Washington Swan Street tonight. We issued the RFP. We're right on schedule there. Uh, Waterfield Lot Redevelopment, we're on schedule there. Um, and then these, there's these other three, um, things, uh, other properties, Glenwood, North Border Road, 164th Street. I've been involved in a lot of communication about 164th Street.
Yeah, I've been on those, those three really, Glenwood, North Border and Forest, so happy to help. I think we need to, um, especially on Glenwood.
Yeah.
That's the next RFP.
All right, so Mike, you want to do Glenwood?
Yeah.
And North Border, you just, I mean, I, I don't know if there's anything in the pipeline on that or anything, but just.
Well, yeah.
Do that. And then I'll do Forest Street with, uh, you're involved in those conversations, I.
Yeah, yeah.
Somehow get on there.
I think that's hopefully coming to a head.
Then we go to economic community development. Well, one and two, I don't, um, I mean, I, as the camera commerce liaison, I guess I can do this. I don't see any of these, I don't know, there's kind of broad categories, but, um.
So number one is the economic development consultant, um, which we are hopefully getting the ARPA funds from the state for.
That's right. So my understanding, those are available for us to pluck.
Well, I've, it's a, I've filled the paperwork out now. It's just a matter of actually getting the money, so.
All right, so we've done the paperwork?
Done the paperwork.
And that's independent of our ARPA funds?
Yeah, the state ARPA fund, yeah.
That was, uh, an earmark from, I believe, Rep Day.
Yep, yep.
So I'm happy to work on that unless somebody else, or somebody wants to work on it with me.
Sure.
10 Commerce Place, I don't think there's anything for us to do at this point, um, just on there.
The only thing that we had, uh, discussed, I think, last week was, um, providing counsel, um, to those hearings with the.
Yeah.
I don't know what's going on with that, but.
Yeah, I, uh, I agree. I think, um, we were going to see, Mina was going to coordinate, Mina was here last time we talked about this at our last public meeting, so I think he was going to try to coordinate to get there, um, and, and talk to the, commission about being there for those hearings. Um, COVID response, um, I don't, I don't know if there's anything we need to do at this point. Obviously, support the Board of Health and anything they need, um, in the Health Department, but, um, and certainly if we need a point person on that, if it, if it gets problematic, we could certainly do that. Um, sustainability initiatives, um.
So I've been involved in those before, especially on the wind power, selecting, um.
We had, we had the bid opening last week for the wind power.
Yeah, and usually it's, you know, one member, usually it's been me and just presented to the whole board to accept at some point, so I can do that.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you. All right, and then we get into some personnel. Obviously, um, objectives, we got to do a, we do a comptroller evaluation and an acting town manager evaluation, so I would assume. Do I run point on those?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure. Beth, number three there, the procurement administrator position. You don't need anything from us on that, right?
No, no.
Okay, uh, committee in town governance, um, Mike, you're our, our liaison to Affordable Housing Trust. I don't think you.
Yeah.
Been there.
Can check number two off the list. Just did that.
Oh, yeah, there I am. I'm on the, uh, cultural commission, cultural district. Zoning Board of Appeals, I mean, I think that's something, um, you know, we'll have to look at, um, you know, uh, just hearing.
Happy to help with that.
Just different parties, um, and people involved in it. Just seems like they're, you know, they're, there's a lot of emails flying around about that, so we, um, we may need to address that, um, you know, after, you know, in the short term, so. Mike, you said you.
Yeah, happy to.
Said something along that. Recreation Department Advisory Committee, um, I mean, I'm close, we closely work with Nick on the Sports Court. I'm happy to just see what, you know, I mean, I think that's just basically being a, a liaison to rec. Sometimes they feel like they're left hanging out there, so I'm happy to do that. I don't know if anyone else wants to help out with it.
Help out if you need to help.
Can't help out with everything. You're only one person.
Am I? I thought I wasn't, but, uh.
Uh, Communication Study, uh, Committee, I don't know if we necessarily need to do anything at this point. I think at some point they will have recommendations. Probably just see how that plays out. One and two in the executive sessions, that's just the board. Um, then we've got some other initiatives here, looks like Swim Winchester, um, and then the Norton Stadium landing policy. I, I don't know if there's anything that we need to do from a Swim Winchester standpoint at this point.
No, I think that's just more of, um, updates for the board. They've issued, they've issued the RFP, their RFP, and I think they've selected a consultant at this point.
And then the Norton Stadium land policy, um, I think that's just the Fields Management Committee and stuff.
Yep.
Our liaison to that.
Could we just back up this Swim Winchester for a second?
Yes.
So they presume that they can, that they can be allowed to build this on a quarter of Skilling's field? Is that my understanding, or do I not understand that?
So there is an Article 97 issue with that, which is a kind of, um, parkland, that it is designated Article 97 land, so it would require, um, vote of the legislature to allow that construction. That was kind of a recent, I'm not sure if it was before, probably right before your, your election.
Yeah.
Um, that was a recent kind of decision that came down from town council. Like, I'm happy, I'm happy to share that memo with you. Yep, yep, it's a process, like everything else.
It was like, you know, we're all parkers, you know, we're not there.
Yeah, no, um.
I'm looking for an answer.
But that's what the psych bar and the school committee voted to give them the go-ahead with that location.
And they're doing all their feasibility.
Yeah, no, it's just, it's a curious spot. It was a landfill. It's got aqueducts under it, and like, I'm still trying to figure that out, but, whatever. More to come. Should have brought an umbrella.
If I can hear the rain.
Yeah, I know.
When it's windows open, right? Okay, um, these last items, I think we've completed. So I don't know if there's anything on, that's not on here, uh, CPA we just talked about.
Yep.
So Mike's going to. Anyone else have anything that's not on here that they would like to see added or have something that's their passion about to kind of pursue this year? We'll, we'll address this again. Go ahead, Anthea.
Oh, sorry, I was just going to say that, um, I've, they got a non-mal, we're talking about CPA, but I'm happy to, um, work on, write on that if, if this is needed.
Great. You're hired. Anything, anything else that's not on here at this point? I mean, we can certainly add stuff as we go, but, you know, just like I said, today is kind of hitting the reset button. Kind of seeing what our priorities are as a group, where we want to go, what do we want to work on, what do we want to hope to accomplish in the next year.
I think Beth, Mark and Meg have their, uh, their plates full looking at this document.
Well, that's why I'm trying to give them a little support from the policy team.
Anything in here to, to do with, um, you know, the elderly population or the Jank Center or just that?
Yeah, that's a good.
This, this, I don't know what goes on, is going on there, and if there should be someone that sort of summarizes those issues and brings them to the board, because they're taxpayers, they don't have kids in the school system, we want them to stay, plus they probably contribute a lot to the community, they still do. So I just want to make sure that that constituency is represented in the work plan. Maybe, I don't, I don't have an answer to that. That's just, uh, something to think about and something I'd be glad to assist with or delve into or summarize and present to the future meeting.
Did we assign a backup to the Council on Aging?
We just did. No, it's a fair point, John. Um, and certainly, you know, um, you know, Council on Aging obviously does a great job in town. Um, you know, they've been hamstrung, obviously, with COVID, um, you know, last couple of years, but, you know, I, I think they're chomping at the bit to, to, to get, you know, ramped up again. They've, they've done a great job the last, you know, several months. The intergenerational project, this, projects that they do over there are, are, are great, um, very well attended, very, you know, a great community, um, effort, so. But, yeah, I mean, there's obviously, you know, you know, obviously, you know, needs, uh, in that area of town as well, so certainly something to.
Yeah, let's, let's chat about that, John, because we did a community needs assessment, you know, a few. Yeah, let's, let's chat about that, John, because we did a community needs assessment, you know, a few years back and a lot of it was, um, really focused on, um, the, you know, access to resources for, for seniors and, um, so, um, and I think that council on aging has been, um, really doing quite a lot lately and been very busy. So it might be time to kind of bring up that conversation in context of their other projects.
And I, I think your background in, um, you know, in the assessors board, right, where a lot of the policy that we do here that relates to that is going to be circuit breaker, right? And things like that. So I think that makes sense.
Great. So we'll add that. Anything else?
Uh, the only other thing I wanted to mention is, um, with our library director retiring in July, so we'll have a new director coming on. I know the, um, Board of Trustees is currently kind of in the interview process, so there might be, we might want to bring the new director in at some point, just to kind of have an introduction and see what we can do to help kind of coordinate with the library.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, the library is another. Add to the list. Any other thoughts? All right. Well, I think that's a good start. So the idea would be, um, you know, we'll get this typed up, um, you know, Patty, I talked to you about just adding another column, you know, just, you know, about point people and stuff. We can talk about that. And then, you know, every, you know, couple of meetings, we'll go through it. Kind of just see if anybody has any updates or where we're at, you know, kind of, you know, our timeframe for some of this stuff. If that makes sense to everybody?
Yep.
I mean, I think that kind of dovetails into our goals. I don't think, I mean, that's, I think we kind of just covered that, so. Maybe we have separate goals or anything. All right, so that brings us to our summer meeting schedule. So we have a lot going on, you know, through June. Um, the idea would be.
Yeah, I, I did, page two wasn't supposed to go with that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm supposed to PDF just one page in less.
Okay. Um, so I don't know what, um, you know, we have our two regular sessions, June 2nd and June 27th, uh, and then we have our special town meeting the 6th. As of right now, we don't have another meeting scheduled, um, in May. We've had a lot. So, uh.
The 24th, we'll have the, um, hearing.
The hearing will have the 24th, uh, and we may, you know, before, we have a meeting scheduled for June 2nd, um, right before. But that's currently what we have scheduled. Um, and then July and August, I think we're, you know, we are trying to meet, um, at least once, uh, a month in person. Um, and then maybe depending on what happens with the emergency legislation, if Zoom's still permitted after July 15th, maybe another meeting via Zoom. I don't know what. If you can get your vacation schedules in, um, I think we're looking for a regular session July 18th, but I don't know what everyone's vacation schedules are. Certainly you can call in, as long as we have a forum here. If that makes sense for.
July 18th is fine for me.
Mm hmm. It's fine for me, too.
I think you're gonna need some, to add some additional meetings in June for the town council RFP interviews.
Right, yeah. Great. That's not technically summer yet, though, so.
That's for in person in August, um, if that could be the, the back half of August, that would be better, I mean.
Okay. Makes sense. Great. Um, so we'll finalize kind of a summer schedule just so everyone has it. Um, try to stick to it as best we can unless, you know, something comes up. And, you know, if Zoom's available, you know, that might be a good option for the summer, um, for a meeting, you know, or two. Um, all right. We have a consent agenda and a supplemental consent agenda.
They moved that we. Okay, I got it here, yeah. Uh, we approve, uh, the meeting minutes from April 1st, 2022.
It's a supplemental.
I'll just get my back to read it. It's just, um.
Please, I look a license.
Um, second.
Uh, roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Anthea?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
And I believe that we approve the one day liquor license for Prudence Horn, May 23rd, 2022, for the Winchester Unitarian Church. Second.
John, roll call vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariana?
Yes.
Uh, Anthea?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Did we miss anything tonight?
No.
Okay. Well, thanks, everyone. Um, we'll be in touch. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Mariana?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Anthea?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, WinCam.
Thanks, Anthea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthea.
Feel better.
Hope you feel better.